First article for tonight is Article 16. This is an article to appropriate the funds for advanced life support services. You can find this again on page 52 of your report on the warrant. This was advanced by the Life Support Study Committee. And we have a positive motion from the Warrant Committee, Warrant Committee member Sharon Taito.
Move that the town vote to appropriate $250,000 said some to be raised on the FY19 tax levy to provide advanced life support, also known as ALS services for the town, including as necessary hiring of personnel, contracting for services, purchase of supplies, equipment and materials, certification training, provided that the appropriation hereunder shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town to exempt the funds from the limitations of taxes opposed by MGL 59, Section 21(c), Proposition 2 and 1/2 so-called.
Thank you. Sharon, do your report.
I do. During FY17, the town's use of a commercial ambulance service for advanced life support came to an end, and since that time, Medfield has relied on aid from neighboring towns that have ALS service when it has been needed. The aid being provided is not a long-term solution. Therefore, at last year's town meeting, it was determined to postpone a decision on how the town should move forward to provide ALS services to the residents until a full review was completed by a committee dedicated to studying the pros and cons and all the options before us. Over the course of the last year, the ALS committee has conducted an in-depth evaluation of the options, and the majority of the committee has recommended the option of the town providing its own ALS services. The fire department currently has two paramedics on staff, which is not enough to license the town as ALS certified. The plan proposes to hire four paramedics and gradually move to a total of eight through a combination of training current EMTs or replacing retiring EMTs with paramedics. This plan will move Medfield into the ranks of the neighboring towns that provide ALS services to their residents. As a warrant committee, we have heard many opinions on the variety of ways our town can provide valuable ALS services to our residents. Even our committee was divided on the best way to move forward. However, a majority of this committee agrees with the ALS committee's recommendation to hire paramedics directly to the fire department. This plan allows our fire chief to manage the staffing to ensure that coverage is provided in a timely manner and with greater control than using a third party. We understand that there are long-term costs such as retirement plans, insurance, et cetera, but we also believe that it is prudent for Medfield to move towards an expanded paramedic staff to provide the ALS service to our residents. The warrant committee recommends passage.
And we have a minority report from Warrant Committee Chairperson Tom Murray.
The Advanced Life Support Committee spent endless nights and days to arrive at a recommendation, albeit not unanimous, to bring ALS to our town. Under the present advanced life support committee recommendation, for fiscal year 19, we would embark on hiring four new employees who will be certified paramedics. This creates a dilemma, a dilemma that once we hire a full-time employee, we own that employee for 40 to 50 years, pension, health insurance, et cetera. With the current situation related to our unfunded OPEB liability, the idea of hiring four new employees is troubling. Combined and in conjunction with the additional costs associated with implementing and sustaining advanced life support, additional capital equipment, and the continuing education and refresher classes for the paramedics, Medfield increases its risk for additional financial This minority report is not against ALS. The belief is that our town does have the obligation to ensure that we get the right person to the right hospital at the right time to receive the right care. There are many times when our taxpayers make a choice without knowing the outcome. So in terms of an alternative, and one which will definitely have a different outcome for our balance sheet, other than seeing the town hire four new employees at first and then an additional four new employees, the suggestion is to create a new committee, a committee that would focus solely on regionalization. This issue regarding ALS has been coming down the pike for five years. We took last year at the town meeting and deliberated at the town meeting and decided at the town meeting to take a pause, pump the brakes. There are neighboring towns that do not presently offer in-house ALS. While some may think that we're taking a step backwards by delaying or considering an alternative, know for certain that if we proceed, we are taking a step backwards financially. Shared BLS and ALS services, or regionalization, exist, and they exist successfully in Western Mass and Central Mass and throughout much of our country.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, next, we're going to have a presentation from the Advanced Life Support Study Committee.
Let me introduce the presenters, but before I do, let me make clear what Article 16 is first and foremost for all of you. The first decision that you need to make is whether or not Medfield should have ALS in FY19. If you think it should, then the second decision you have to make is how much you want to pay for it. As Sharon pointed out, about a year and a half ago, we lost the intercept ALS service that we had enjoyed for a number of years based in the local hospitals. After a couple of attempts to replace that, finally, we wound up realizing we weren't going to get any near-term replacement from contract services, and Westwood, Walpole, and Norfolk for the last year and a half have stepped in to fill the breach to provide us with backup ALS support. They have done that because they recognize the bind that we were in. Last year, about a half, about six months after we lost the, our existing ALS intercept service, the discussion at last year's town meeting was whether we should move ahead with ALS, and the price tag that was first floated for that was $750,000. By the time we got to town meeting, it was $600,000, and it became so apparent that there was not much appetite for that kind of a price, that we went into town meeting without an actual article recommending a permanent solution. But the selectmen did offer a contingency article asking the taxpayers to set aside $500,000 in the event that the mutual aid that we received from Westwood, Walpole, and Norfolk, if that fell apart, because they got tired of helping us out, we would have the option of hiring a private ambulance service for at least part of the year so we could maintain ALS. That article was defeated. But what did come out of the town meeting, as has been mentioned, was the ALS Study Committee. Our charter was to find a way to bring ALS to Medfield in the most cost-effective manner that we could. The committee has worked very hard. The option that the committee is recommending to the town has a price tag of $250,000 to the town. That's a function of increased cost to the fire department, and you'll get the details in a minute, but it also includes the expected increased revenues that come in, and that will all be explained in a minute. I want to address the idea of regionalization. Regionalization is myth. If you think we can regionalize, I would love to hear the towns that you think have sufficient volume to justify regionalization. The only two towns that have come up are Dover and Sherburne. Both of them have fewer calls than we do. We pursued both of them, and they quite reasonably decided they would rather continue paying as you go because they have such low volume that they get support from other communities and they don't need to put any money up. Worse than that, had we joined with them, the price to do that, even with the most attractive private ambulance service, would have been greater than $250,000. So if you think that regionalization is an option, I'm telling you as the chair of the ALS Study Committee, that will not be an option this year, and the decision you will make is that we will not have ALS this year. This is a moral issue, and I'm not suggesting it's a moral issue if you vote for ALS, and it's an immoral issue if you vote against it based on cost, but make no doubt, this is an issue more than any other issue you are going to discuss this year that does in fact affect people's lives. There's a cost with it, but there's a purpose to it as well. And I only ask you to think very carefully about that before you just jump to an economic argument one way or the other. To help explain what our recommendation is all about, we have Chief Hollingshead and Chief Meany here to make a brief presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, with your permission?
Please start.
Thank you. Bob Meany, 215 Main Street. So the chart of the way we started off is, we started on the premise that you wanted ALS, wanted advanced life support, and we moved on from there. We did look at a full range of options. We also looked at collaboration with other towns, which basically talks about regionalization. Walpole and Westwood have paramedics for their service, so they're set. Milis and Norfolk have made the decision within the past few years to also make the move, so they're beginning that process as well. So as Gus had indicated, we looked at Dover and Sherburne to see if we could come up with some sort of regional network there, and that was no. However, on the other end of it is that if we do it, they will probably call us. So it's one of those things, if you build it, they will come. So there'll be some revenue generated from that. We looked at various types of operational considerations for ALS. We really didn't want to get into this too far because that should be left to Chiefs Hollingshead and Carrico, who is sitting over there as our fire chief-to-be within the next week or so, who I will look forward to working with, and as much I hope as I looked, as I was able to work with retired chief Bill Kingsbury, who was a wonderful guy to be with. So other considerations, we looked at, what do we really need? What do we really want? What should the taxpayers of the town have? What might they be willing to pay for? So I put myself in this position a bit to think what I would want. And ALS is what I would want. I'll tell you, I've been a registered emergency medical technician since 1975. I gave it up a couple of years ago. I ran the EMS here in Medfield. I ran it over for Wellesley Police, so I understand it pretty well. And when paramedics first came along, boy, what a difference it was in the service that we're able to provide for people, huge. Long-term revenue projection, we worked on that. We have numbers on that that will be discussed further on in the presentation. One of our, one of the members of our committee was a gentleman under the name of Brendan McNiff, a Medfield high-success story, who also was chief operating officer of a couple of private ambulance companies, which brought a unique perspective to it. He's also extraordinary with numbers. So what we're presenting to you, we feel very comfortable with through all the work and through Brendan's work also. Thank you very much for that. And we had a discussion about how emergency services will evolve over time. It's difficult to do the crystal ball and sort that out. When I started years ago, just being an EMT, that was a huge difference, and you could see that ALS was going to come. It did. This is rapidly becoming the standard of care. I would think that there's, you know, when everyone's home and tucked in bed, there's some 12,500 of us here, you know, snoring away, and probably a vast number of you assume that when you dial 911 and the ambulance comes, that you've got two paramedics. And right now, you don't. So, you know, we thought you would probably want something more to that, and so that's why we decided to go with the ALS part. This is the study committee, the people who are on it, voting members on the top line, then Jeff Benati, who's lieutenant of the fire department, Brendan McNiff I mentioned, Christine Trierweiler, who does everything and anything, and then Chief Hollingshead and Sean Kay. Sean Kay, another Medfield high-success story, offered some very unique perspectives and kept us on the straight and narrow, and asked some hard questions, and we needed those hard questions to be asked. So, a little bit of this Gus has already gone over, so I'm not going to take a long time with it, but on the left-hand side, when you see the word independent, pretty much think of Medfield Fire Department doing the work. So we originally started off somewhere around 600,000 plus to hire the eight medics, which was discussed last year at town meeting. Clearly got the message, nope, didn't want that. So got to come back with another idea. So our first revision got us down to hiring the four firefighter paramedics, which is where the majority of the committee is now, and that comes in around $400,000, plus or minus. And that, we will show you some numbers on that, but it's one of the first times that a higher-end of a town employee has considered everything, the OPEB, all the numbers. It's a very accurate number. So from there, you go down, how do you get down to the 250? Gus mentioned it somewhat in that enhanced revenues, billing that will come back to the town of Medfield as opposed to go to Westwood or Walpole when they come over to do the work, or such as, the other day, we had a run on Indian Hill, Norfolk fire came over, Norfolk did the transport. So we get nothing out of that one. So there's some revenue that's able to be gained and counted on in that method. Middle method is collaboration. You can read that as regionalization. As has already been alluded to, we did speak with all the area towns at various levels, with chiefs, with the on-the-street personnel, at higher level in Town Hall, the town administrators, and came up with the idea, real clear, that everyone is content with what they've got, and they really don't need us to come along and be part of their system. They're not interested in it at all. We got that very clearly. So it leaves us, it leaves us back to do our own. The full outsourcing, you'll hear about that later as another option. That is more expensive. It does involve hiring, you know, not hiring, we would be paying a private company to come in and provide us with eight paramedics, not firefighter medics, eight medics on July 1. So you may say, wow, we'll get ALS right away on July 1. Why don't we do that? And the other option that we've already talked about, the four firefighter medics, we will be able to work with the other towns. So the other towns will continue to support us and work with us. And one of the things that we will have that we don't have now, a lot of talk in the fire service about mutual aid. I really shouldn't get too much to the red team talk because I'm standing here clearly in blue, but fire departments depend on mutual aid. Right now, our firefighters, yes, they're doing mutual aid, no question about that. There's a garage fire in Walpole, over we go. There's one here in Medfield, over they come. ALS, they come here. It's one way. We can't go there because we can't offer that level of service. So we can really have mutual aid. So you'll hear some more discussion about the full outsourcing with the privates there. One thing I just mentioned is that through the years on that, there's a sheet that you may have picked up on the way in, some ALS key points and information. We had Metro West, they went out. We had Newark Hospital, they went out. We had a little bit of Milford-Whitensville, they went out. We had events from Medway, they went out. Brewster came over and tried it for a while, but the business model doesn't work, helping us out, doing it that way. For their business model to work, they need to get a stipend, and that's just, that's just what, simply what the math is. So that's the brief introduction, and from this point, I will turn it over to Chief Hollingshead, our interim chief, who, this is, he's kind of like wrapping up his time with us here. I've really enjoyed working with him. I didn't know how things were going to be, truthfully, once Bill left me. And, you know, I feel like a little abandonist, like Donovan, this big building by myself. Chief Hollingshead came in, he's been a great partner, very intelligent, very open-minded. I've enjoyed working with him and publicly thank him for the months he's given us and the work he's done on the ALS program. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, your permission?
Please.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. It's been a real pleasure being here in Medfield, if I may. Very honorable position in the fire chief following Chief Kingsbury. You should be very proud of your fire department, and that's what we're going to talk about a little bit tonight, about your fire department. Very professional, permanent guys, permanent firefighters, on-call firefighters, do a tremendous job. One of the issues that we're looking at is that Medfield, the ALS system per se is a system. You know, we talked about the fire service being a service, but you know what part of the real success here comes from, being part of a system? Our relationship with the hospitals, our relationship with the mutual aid communities is strong, could be a little bit stronger, but we'll look at that. I'd like to take the opportunity to also thank the ALS committee for the numerous meetings they had. I've only been here since September, and I know that they met before then. A tremendous amount of work on your behalf went into that committee and some of the decisions that have been made. Basically, the fire department, your fire department, is at the EMT level, and higher priority calls, advanced life support. And we look at this synopsis here, understand that we're talking about the additional of four firefighter paramedics. We're not talking about strictly paramedics, as we're looking at firefighter paramedics. So there's dual roles, there's dual involvement. We're going to look at things like public education, getting people involved, but it improves the safety level for the community, but also for the firefighters that are here to protect you. ALS presently, as it's set, is that if we have a high ALS call, cardiac, pediatric emergency, a respiratory issue, allergic reactions, we have to call for an intercept. That intercept right now comes out of Westwood or Walpole. To the point of, I don't want to say they're taxpayers, but part of the mutual aid system is that they've been very cooperative relative to providing service to our residents. Some of you have, might have seen that you, on long 109, once in a while, you would have seen two ambulances pulled over. One is your ambulance, the Medfield ambulance, which is at the basic life support, the basic EMT level, hooking up with the Westwood or Walpole ambulance. Their paramedics are intercepting our ambulance. One or two, one of their paramedics, depending on the priority of the call, would get in the back of our ambulance, and we would transport to Norwood. And the way that billing system works is that we would bill at the acceptable rate, and the recoverables, we would have, the town would split that recoverable with Westwood or Walpole, whoever we shared services with, okay? So we wouldn't be getting the full 100%. If we do bring it in-house, we talked about the control, we talked about controlling the employees, a lot of discussion relative to benefits, et cetera, the OPEB costs, absolutely, that's a number. And I, my commendations to the committee, talking about the benefits. When was the last time you heard in open discussion the very specific cost of health insurance and pension costs? This is, from my experience, this is the first time these numbers have been laid out to folks. Those are the numbers that apply to all town employees, not just the fire service, but also any other new hires in the community. So that's an important point to look at, okay? If you look at the slide that's overhead, that is the recommended course of action. Presently, as was mentioned previously, there are eight full-time firefighters in the Medfield Fire Department. There are 15 on-call firefighters. The on-call folks do a tremendous job. If there's a certain box alarm, as we call it, they respond from their home, their jobs, whatever it might be, and they help support the Medfield community. They do a tremendous job. So out of the eight full-time employees, two of them are already paramedics. One of the eight is also an advanced EMT. He can do certain interventions, not at the full paramedic level. There is the opportunity for one or two full-time members to go to paramedic school, so that's an option as well. So if you look at the 12 there, our ultimate goal, initial, ultimate goal is to get the eight full-time paramedics. We'll talk a little bit about a PB level system. A PB level system is the standard of care in the state of Massachusetts. What the PB level is, is that on certain advanced life support calls, you can have an EMT driving the ambulance and a paramedic in the back. You do not have to have two. So the statewide standard of care out there is what they call the PB level, a one-on-one. We are part of a region, and our medical control comes out of Norwood Hospital. Region four, and most people will agree, region four is one of the strictest regions around when they talk about two paramedics. What they're looking for, if you're at the PB level, the one-on-one, you can deal with calling for an intercept to have that second paramedic. The hospital medical control would like us to call a mutual aid intercept to have that second, goes to the real higher priority calls, okay? We're looking to add the four firefighter paramedics, like I said earlier, not just paramedics sitting around waiting for a call. Your Medfield firefighter paramedics will respond to every call that comes into that fire station. They will work for us. We will control all of the skill levels, any issues along those way. There are three levels. We talked about skill degradation for a paramedic. There are three, at least three levels built into our system. There's a state level, there's the region level, there's the hospital level, and there's also the internal controls. That we, I feel very strongly about the people that are involved in the Medfield Fire Department as far as the control of the system. And like a lot of things, I think it's very important, from my humble opinion, is that you want to control the system. Because if you don't control the system, then the system can control you. And I get a little leery about that, especially when it comes to advanced life support, okay? So as I mentioned earlier, we'll convert two existing EMT slots to paramedics and obtain an ALS license in conjunction with the mutual aid communities. Now, one of the things that we've had a long discussion on is there's a position, up to the, to your left, there's two positions in yellow. One of those positions, what we're going to call a supernumerary, in which in about a four or five-year period, depending upon the system, the fire department could be staffed at, there could be a 13th position. So we're not trying to hide anything. If the normal plan of transition takes place, that position should not be there. But we just want to make sure the timeline and everything works out, that that could be there for a very short period of time. It's not, we're not looking to boost to the 13th position, but we want to be straightforward and tell you that four or five years down the road, somebody can look at the numbers and say, well, it's 13. We just want you to be aware that that's there. So a little bit about the cost implications. It was mentioned earlier as far as some of the numbers, and again, commend the committees to look at all of the numbers in that respect. Talked about the four positions, about $400,000 with the salaries. The benefits, total for the fours, about $60,000. The OPEB costs, which you folks are on top of out here in the community, the OPEB costs about $20,000 in putting it into the system. So you're at the ballpark, you're at about $400,000 for the four full-time firefighter paramedics, dual-role firefighter paramedics. The increased revenues, and we've looked at that for a long period of time, and we looked at the generation of funds that has come into the community. Now remember, when we bill an insurance company or Medicaid or Medicare, whatever it is, they will send us back a rated amount of money, and if we've called in ALS intercept, then we split that recoverable as well. So we're looking at roughly $150,000. That's a very conservative number as far as income to the community. That's where they come, we come up with a number of a net cost, and I think that's the important number to look at. Once the system gets set up, the net cost to you folks in the community is about $250,000. So yes, at some point in the fire department budget, you will see the $400,000, but you do not lose sight of the fact that there's going to be generating income. One of the few departments besides Park and Rec and that really contribute revenue to the community into the general fund, and that's an important point to look at. Looking at 100% of the recoverables, going back here into the community and building a system in which you folks will be proud of as part of this community. So the third person on a shift, there are four shifts in the fire department. Presently, there are two full-time firefighters on Presently, there are two full-time firefighters on duty. They are supplemented on a regular basis with the call firefighters, but there are two. Adding the third firefighter paramedic gives us flexibility in the sense that if we have an advanced life support call, the three firefighters will go out the door, at least two of them will be paramedics. If we only, if they determine that it's only a certain level of advanced life support and the PB level allows the second paramedic to come back to the station, we are sending the ambulance to Norwood or Needham, wherever, the other hospitals that are out there, that second paramedic can come back to the station and be ready to respond to another call. Because we've sent only an EMT and paramedic out to the other hospitals. So we're improving the level of service here in the community. The medical emergency aspect of it is that certain cardiac calls, certain pediatric emergencies, honestly, I would like to have three firefighter paramedics at your door. You have a very good standard here in this community. We could put a firefighter, we could put a firefighter at your door in the average of four minutes. Now you think about that, you hear all the numbers out there relative to cardiac, oxygen loss to the brain, four minutes we can put somebody at your front door. Having that third person gives us a tremendous amount of flexibility relative to incident ongoing and another incident that could occur. Having the third firefighter paramedic on the shift also re, potential to reduce injuries. I don't want to put dollars and cents on that aspect of it, but back injuries are part of our business. Having an extra set of hands along with the police department who respond, do an excellent job. Firefighting, that's a whole nother discussion. We're improving the level of fire service delivery here in the community. It's just not fire. It's all kinds of things. When you think about the times people have called for carbon monoxide calls, water problems, whatever it is, you call 919, you get the fire department. And having that third set of hands initially is going to make a big difference. So the bottom line is, part of this whole system that will, you are going to discuss tonight, is about what's best for the community. And I think when you look at things, it goes back to the control. I've been very proud to work with the Medfield Fire Department and Police Department and all the other department heads. It's all about the system. And you folks here, you pay a lot of money, after listening to last night, you pay a lot of money. This is an instance where it's going to benefit not only the 12,500 people in the community, but other employees and visitors that come through this, this fine community. At some point, we'll get to questions, will be my pleasure, but in all honesty, very serious discussion tonight, and obviously, I think you know how I feel, but I appreciate it. It's been a true pleasure here in Medfield and good luck in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, next, we're just going to have ques, you can stay right there, Chief. And we're just going to have questions regarding the presentation in support of the positive motion. If you have a question, you can go to microphone number one or number two. Chief Hollingshead and Chief Meany and Slekman-Murby will answer those questions. Microphone number two. These are just questions now. We're not looking for comments. We'll have plenty of time for everybody to express their point of view. Thank you.
My name's Stuart Beer and I live at 301 North Street. The question I have is, how much lag time is between the setting this all up and we start getting some payback in terms of the revenues that might be generated? Are we talking six months? We're talking a year, two years?
Question is how long was the lag time? We have presently have two paramedics onboard and in all honesty, we can get a PB level application and going and we could honestly start to build that, put that system in place come July 1 with the presently with the two paramedics. Understanding that if we move forward in this process, we maintain the arrangement with Westwood and Walpole as far as the ongoing mutual aid. So sure, one of the points you might hear is that we can have a private service in here, two paramedics 24 hours a day parked somewhere, but we can build that system relatively quick. To be honest, it could take a year or two. But once we get to the four and the two, we'll have six, one more firefighter goes to paramedic school, we'll be at the seven level and we're almost at that full ALS license.
Microphone number one.
Hi, Bill Harvey, on Taboric Drive. The $150,000 in revenue, can you explain the underlying number of calls on an annual basis? And also, what fraction of that is just for Medfield versus what would be callouts and mutual aid for other, other communities such as Sherborne?
Okay. The present numbers that are out there, the advanced life support calls, and this is an interesting issue. The number of identifiable ALS calls for last, last year was about 146 ALS calls. Now, one of the issues that we looked at was as far as how do we balance and maintain our good relationship with Westwood and Walpole, okay? So the specific numbers this year, we've already generated up to today roughly about $336,000 in revenue into the community. Our outgoing, our expenditures, the mutual aid to Westwood and Walpole, equates to roughly up to today about $66,000. So you do the math, we're pretty good. Once we start moving into a full control of the receivables, that number's actually going to go up and the net cost ultimately is going to go down. So if it takes us a little longer, the net gain for you folks is going to be quite substantial.
Please, yes.
I'd like to, that's one answer about how we're doing this year, but I think maybe part of your question was, how did we get to that model that you saw up on the screen?
Yeah, just in a general sense, what does the model look like? What's the baseline callouts for Medfield? What's the assumed mutual aid that's going out, that, that service that we provide for others that are, that are not? So that-
The first answer to your question is that we didn't base that model on a certain number of calls, call volume, there, we've based some of this stuff on calls, but that $150,000 is made up of three components. The first is that when Brendan McNiff came and first looked at our dispatch procedures, he recognized that we have the ability to change our dispatch procedures, and if we did, what would happen is we would be classifying more of the incoming calls as ALS calls. So a call that comes in as an ALS call, you are allowed to charge a higher fee for an ALS response than a BLS response. When he looked at the way we've been doing it right now and just looked kind of how we do it, he realized that we have opportunities to change our dispatch procedures and when we do that, we will reclassify more incoming calls as ALS calls. And that alone will result, based on our past experience, that alone is $50,000 improvement in revenues. The second component of the $150,000 is that when you look at the actual ALS fees that Medfield is paying to Westwood, Walpole, and maybe to a lesser extent Norfolk, we are sending out $85,000 in fees to pay them for the intercept service that they're providing. And I think in a couple of cases, they choose to also do the transport. So right now, Medfield is paying out $85,000 for the kind of intercept support we're getting from neighboring communities. What we're saying is if we have an ALS capability here in town, that $85,000 doesn't go out, it comes back in. That gets you to $135,000. We then anticipated, we believe conservatively, that it would, if we had an ALS capability, we could expect to generate fees from Dover and Sherborne of a combined $25,000. That comes out to $160,000 total. We took $10,000 off that and said, because we, we have tried to conservatively estimate things, we took $10,000 off that and called it $150,000. That's where that number you saw on the slide came from.
Okay, thank you.
Three more questions. Microphone number two.
Hi, Erin Martinez, 393 Main Street. I'm actually wondering about outcomes with ALS versus BLS and if we have any data on improved outcomes. As a physician, I've sort of looked into specifically cardiac and it looks like BLS might actually have better outcomes in cardiac situations, specifically like more getting to a higher level of care as opposed to like stopping on the, on the side of the road and getting a paramedic, why not just get to Norwood? Do we have any data or proof that, that what we're doing or what we're planning to do will actually provide better patient outcomes?
Yes, excuse me. The data is out there and I, I know that there are people can stand up here and, I mean, and argue against, but I'm going to put a little reality shake to that. The BS, BLS level, there are studies out there that are very specific that say you can move very quickly and just get somebody to the hospital. Bottom line. The other aspect of that is that in all honesty, the ALS intervention in your home with medications, cardiac monitor, cardiac intervention, in some respects is worth the price. Sure, can I, can we, yeah, there's studies out there. I don't have those specific numbers for you right now, but you and I both know they're out there. But the reality of this, what, what are we looking for here in the community?
Or in the next year, would we have a way that we would track it so that we could see, are we doing better? You know, is this worth the money or if we, or if it doesn't pass, that we're missing out on something?
I'm sorry, once again.
I guess, I'm just saying like if, if, so if we proceed with ALS, I guess, is there a way to show us that we're actually having better patient outcomes with it? You know, as opposed to just that advanced sounds better than basic?
One of the things I, I- One of the things that we're working internally relative to is upgrading of the software system to control those things. But as you are aware of, every call that goes into Norwood Hospital, part of the quality assurance program, gets tracked and identified. So those outcome numbers are available in that respect. So obviously, we move forward in that, we will be able to put forward to Board of Select in the community to be able to show you the benefit in that respect, okay? So those numbers are out there.
Yeah.
And obviously, when we get up and running and improve your service, we'll be able to put a more finite number to that to make it-
Okay.
-realistic. Thank you.
Microphone number one.
Sure, Ralph Manchan, 18 Summer Street. Two questions for you. So you showed the $400,000 and that to me is kind of like a static point in time. And as we talked yesterday with the increase in healthcare costs, the, you know, the pensions and the unfunded liability, what does that run rate look like if we're talking three years from now, five years from now? So is that 400,000 really, 500,000? And then what does that look like when we add the eight? And my second question is, and maybe you showed it, but I didn't see, but what's the outsourced number in terms of the contract and what that would cost?
We don't have, this side of the fence doesn't have that. You might hear that a little bit later on. There is a history relative to some of the requests for information that have gone out. So if somebody else wants to speak on that, they're more than welcome. I can't speak for what the increase in health insurance and those figures are two or three, four years down the road, but I, because I know that the, the OPEB actuary had, had he had very difficult time assigning a number to those positions because of so many things are variable relative to age and how long you're going to stay in service and all those kind of things. I don't have that number for you, maybe somebody else might down the road.
Let me once again take, take another crack at that. First off, we did not try to model some sort of a multi-year, you know, what's the cost of living going to be? The reason that we didn't do that is we have no reason to believe that the increase in the cost for an internal paramedic is going to be radically out of line with what the increase in cost for a private ambulance service is. We have no evidence that would say a private ambulance services are never going to increase their cost. In fact, some of the, one of the proposals, one of the responses to the RFI we got, they showed a $50,000 a year increase from the first to the second to the third year. So the idea was that both sides probably do accelerate and we just didn't try to model that. I think it gets back to the point that I started with though. It's a good question around cost modeling. It doesn't get you, I think, to a fundamental answer on whether or not the town should have ALS.
And maybe that goes back to the person's question before, well, is there a big difference in outcomes between the two?
No.
And I, I think if we saw that from a transparency standpoint, I think that helps make a better decision.
So let me answer that question again from a totally unqualified guy who didn't know very much about emergency services until 10 months ago, when he was put on an ALS study committee and he was elected chair. I've gotten a little smarter. I, that, I, I read some of those. In fact, one of the studies that I looked at basically said, you know what's better than BLS? The bystander who knows CPR, who happens to be standing there when the person drops to the sidewalk. So we could probably eliminate all emergency services because that study said, the guy right next, it had to do with speed is what that was, that study, how fast you do it. I'm not an emergency service specialist. I'm not in any position, and I would suspect most people in this room are not in a position to actually do the technical evaluation about ALS versus BLS to come up with any kind of a valid conclusion. When I wrestled with, and I said, this is an industry that has said the standard of care is ALS. The components of ALS are not just cardiac anyway, and my, my sense from our last discussion was the med, with the medical director in one of our meetings, is that they've actually changed some of the protocols to not accelerate some of the invasive aspects of cardiac treatment that they might have done when some of those studies were done. I'm way out of my element to evaluate that. But my point is, I'm not in a position to answer that question. All I know is the industry says that's the standard.
Okay, microphone number two. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jack on 71 Pleasant Street. We have on the fire department, I think, five EMTs or six?
There are five EMTs, one advanced EMT and two paramedics, correct.
They could be paramedics, right?
Of the five?
Of the six.
Um, yes, at least one is interested in going, we're dealing with the potential for a second, and that's a contractual issue.
Well, if Ford decided to be paramedics with incentives, we wouldn't have to hire anyone.
If you look, to that point, you could be absolutely correct, but one of the issues with that point, sir, is that there, there are some legal issues with that. There's also the point as far as when certain individuals are hired, they're hired to certain criteria. And there's been, there's been an offer on the table from the community relative to looking to making that move forward. We can't sit here tonight and say to you, yes, we are going to force three or four other firefighters to go to paramedic school. That would go down a very uncomfortable path.
I, I know you can't force anyone, but there are, there are incentives-
That's correct.
-to give to people so they want to go to school and learn more.
Thank you very much. Well, a good point and towns have worked on that, sir. Thank you.
Okay, final question. Microphone number one.
Aaron Kenny, I'm at 2 Kingsbury Drive. I had a question of, did, I just wanted to make sure I was correct in hearing that the ambulance currently generates about, or it's already generated about $300,000 in revenue this year, roughly?
That's correct.
Has there been any investigation into a revolving fund that would keep those funds in the fire department so that in essence, I mean, that's a large chunk of what money is being presented that it's going to cost, right? If that money's kept in the fire department and doesn't go into the general fund, then it would in essence almost pay for itself, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I was-
Thank you.
Paul Hinkley, 106 Harding Street. I've been hearing a lot about the four-minute thing is really critical for-
Just want to, is this a question? We're going to have comments and points of view afterwards. Do you have a question for the podium?
No, I'll come back.
Okay, that's good. No more questions. So we'll come back. Everybody will have an opportunity to be able to speak to these. I think at this point, we have a motion, right?
Thank you. I would like to amend Article 16 and substitute $700,000 instead of $250,000.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Kasky saying that the move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $700,000, said some to be raised on the fiscal year 19 tax levy to provide advanced life support services for the town. Okay, and we have a very short presentation. Why don't, Steve, why don't you give your perspective? You were on the ALS study committee.
I was also on the ALS committee with Neil O'Connor. Neil O'Connor was one of the people who voted for this and then towards the end, after seeing our presentations, decided to move onto our side, but he wasn't allowed to, we weren't allowed to revote. So right now, it's currently four to two, but Neil wants to do a presentation on the private ALS option.
Okay, that's great. Why don't you step up to the podium with Neil too, if there are any questions afterwards? Okay, this is a presentation just on the motion to amend. Okay, this is a presentation just on the motion to amend.
Minor technical issue. Okay, to start, Mr. Moderator? Okay. My name is Neil O'Connor. I've been a resident here in Medfield for about 45 years. I've been a paramedic in the past. I worked, probably last about 18 years ago. So my time experience is not in the current mode and how they do things, is how things are done in the past. And I just couldn't see my notes and my slides on the screen, so. Okay. Yep. This is my front page. Anyone hear me now? Better? Okay. My name is Neil O'Connor. I've been a resident here in Medfield for about 45 years. Twenty, thirty, 32 years ago, I actually worked on the ambulance here in Medfield in town, had been a part of the fire department for a short period of time, and left all that about 18, 20 years ago. I had gone through paramedic school, so I understand what it is we're asking our current firefighters to go through. The difference in time, as you look at it, is 140-hour program to go through, become an EMT, and it's 1,800-hour program to become a paramedic. You're looking at 10 times the education. So it is a big step we're asking them to go to, but I think it's someplace that we should consider, and I'm glad the town is offering training to help them do that. Okay. The, the alternative option we're presenting here is for a private intercept model. This option presents a private company stationed in Medfield with two paramedics 24 hours a day, seven days a week. All the equipment, the vehicle they arrive in, are all covered under a single flat-rate contract price. The private intercept paramedics will work in conjunction with the Medfield firefighter EMTs and our ambulance, much as we've seen in the past, when we had Norwood Hospital, Leonard Morris Hospital, Events, AMR, and now we have Westwood doing that for us. This is, this is very similar to all those parts and pieces. How do I move this forward? Okay. Why would we advocate using a private service provider for the Medfield ALS needs? Simply put, the agencies are better equipped to provide this service from day one. I know we have the ability to do, from the fire department aspect, to start the service in pieces, but we don't have a full service system in place. By going with the private option on day one, July 1st, we could immediately start with two trained paramedics that are in town 24 hours a day. They can provide their fully qualified personnel and equipment, and over the longer duration, they have the ability to rotate their staff through high-demand assignments that provides them the opportunity to practice and retain the skills they've acquired during the training. And that's one thing that's just not possible with the staff that's dedicated solely in the town of Medfield. The other option, or the other ability, the bonus we get with the private, is they will manage all the obligations of full-time, direct employees, from staffing vacancies, overtime costs, retraining costs. This reduces the financial risk to the town. And then finally, we feel that this arrangement provides much better flexibility to the town as our needs evolve or regulatory requirements change. This contract will have a fixed duration with no obligation beyond the contract term. At the end of the contract, we are free to make changes and adjustments that we deem are in the best interest of the town, and we will not incur any long-term financial obligations. As we compare the two, the service level provided within the private option is better than the town employee option with two contract paramedics per shift rather than one. The private option provides much faster implementation, sustainable skills, predictable costs, and a more valuable method to adapt to future needs and conditions. Although the annual net cost for this private service is higher, it does not come with post-employment benefit obligations that are associated with using town employees. In summary, as we consider how to best provide ALS service, the problem facing Medfield, as well as the surrounding towns, is a capacity utilization issue. The demand for ALS service in Medfield over the past five years is remarkably stable at approximately 570 work hours a year. The town employee option will add 8,000 work hours of paramedic capacity to the system, that is for the hire of one additional person. It will be a challenge both to pay for this capacity increase and to assure that the personnel retain their life-saving skills acquired during their certification process. In addition, the town employee option will lock in these employees via the collective bargaining agreement. This will reduce our ability to adapt to changing conditions or pursue alternative service arrangements such as a regionalization approach. Given the financial challenges our town faces, it should be noted that the entire fire department budget has increased at a rate of 5.5% annually over the last 18 years. It would be a prudent move to add the fixed cost of this, to this department, with the employee option that burdens the town financial situation today and well into the future. Using a private option at this point will provide the needed service immediately and allow the time to form, to more fully explore options that address the root cause of our ALS service dilemma, which is a capacity utilization issue. Furthermore, the ALS committee was charged to locate all feasible options, including any other technically or feasible options. That's where this option takes a smooth transition in service. We currently have two fully qualified paramedics on staff. One retirement in the next couple of years, as we had just heard about, that is by contract replaced with a medic. The fire chief has indicated he could find the funding at one point to purchase the equipment that would be needed for the ALS service. That was one thing that wasn't talked about in the last presentation. They focused on manpower, but nothing about the equipment needed to provide the service that we're looking for. Through the numerous discussions we've had, it's been discussed that there is public source finding, grant money, and other options. I would say, go get it. Start with the private service and let them get the equipment so we can start to do the in-house transition to our own service here in Medfield with the eight qualified firefighters that we have, two of whom are already paramedics. Next, next year, the new chief would have had a chance to settle in, and at that point, we could apply for a PB waiver. We could staff one shift with two medics and then cut our contracted service back to 25%. That's an option that starts to see where you can go and grow our eight-person department that is currently two paramedics and six non-paramedic staff, and we could, through service attrition, change and keep our staff of eight and transfer slowly into a paramedic system. It may take several years, but by doing so, we also do not have 40 years of employee obligations. The department was originally put together and staffed 24 hours a day. If you've gone back and looked at the research, it was always done to staff the ambulance 24 hours a day. We have that. It's what we need, it's what we want. What we want now is paramedic service. We're 25% there. Let's work with this system where we have one additional paramedic in retirement in the next two years. We have a great incentive program that's in this current contract that's been proposed, and I believe signed by everyone, that incentivizes several more EMTs. If they wish to transition to paramedic service, they can. And so we can go from year one with full ALS service private. We can go to year two to 25% ALS private. In year three, we may be able to get to half our shifts covered ALS private. So we take that big scary number of $700,000, and you start paring that down. And as we get to the end of this goal, it might be five or six years with still partial coverage with the private, we now have full service ALS in town with a similar PB waiver system that's already been very well discussed by the fire chief.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Okay, now we'll have questions from Mr. Kaski and Mr. O'Connor. If there are any questions, we're considering the motion to amend. Question?
Loud, 17 Kenny Road. Would like to ask if what you are thinking right this minute is that it, we don't need this. Well, I have both ends. I have elderly parents that live in this town, as well as grandchildren who have medical issues. And if you are asking for nobody to be there to respond...
Excuse me, do you have a question?
Yeah. My issue is, why don't we have these ALS staff onboard? Yes, it, it's going to cost us money, but we have people trained. So tell me why you're not going to train them, you're going to spend 700 whatever for training when it's 250 or whatever? If these people are here and willing to be trained, well, train them. These are valuable lives that live in this town, and we shouldn't have to worry about whether we have to go to Westwood or whether we have to go to...
Thank you. Do we have another question?
Hi. Dude.
Question?
Can I, can I answer that, Les?
Sure. I didn't get the question, but if you have a question...
I got a quick question out of it. There's no question about wanting ALS service. That is not what we're here. We are uniformly and unanimously agree ALS service is necessary. What we are offering is to go to a private service that offers us full, complete ALS service July 1st. No partials.
Okay, good. Microphone number two.
Steve Callahan from Petterzini Drive. First of all, I just want to thank everybody up in the front of the room there for all the time and effort you put in, for everything you do. I had a question in terms of, a couple of questions. One, what's the length of time that you anticipate this contract to be for? And then, second part is, is there any element of cost savings, of ability to direct this company to go into other, other neighboring towns and get some revenue?
So the typical contracts are approximately three years, and then they can be renewed on an annual basis or whatever it is the town negotiates. And the negotiation is the key part to this option. The ability to go to other towns would be something that would be a matter of the RFI, the selectman, and the fire chief and their department making those arrangements and agreements. I fully support that idea. Yeah. In the request for information that were sent out, we did get two responses. The 700 number is based off of that. In that 700 number, there were no other additional fees in the RFI for that.
And one last question. What's the difference between what you're proposing and what's been done over the last three or four years?
So what I'm proposing has absolutely no difference than what we've seen for the last 20 years since they've started it, with the exception of two items. One, we're paying for it, so they're here, dedicated to us. Two, they're dedicated to us.
Microphone number one. Question, please.
Hi, 9 Miniman Road. I was wondering what ambulance company has provided you the $700,000 estimate?
So there were two bids. One bid was from Fallon, their bid was far more expensive. The second bid was from Armstrong Ambulance. Their actual fee was $850, $850,000 for the first year. Using the same math as the fire department proposal, there's $150,000 savings back for revenue that is recovered by the town. So that's where the 700 comes from.
And what would guarantee you the quality of paramedics that you talk about? Why, as you said, they've taken away all the staffing and benefit issues. They would also take care of staffing. How would we have any control over who was in the town, whether there were background checks, whether they were a brand-new paramedic? How would we control that under your, under your thing?
Great question, and easier than if they were our own. In the RFI, it is specified that any paramedic that works here has to be approved by the town of Medfield, and specifically by the fire chief, and that any paramedic that is working here through the private service, if we have any issue at all with that paramedic, the fire chief can ask for them to be dismissed, and they will not be back to town.
And then last question. This is, would be a three-year contract at a cost of $2.1 million to the town? Is that what you're telling us?
Roughly, yes. And it depends on how we can modify that with improving our own staff and starting our own service.
Question from microphone two.
Andrew Curry, Green Street. Are you opposed to mutual aid?
Am I opposed to mutual aid?
To the mutual aid system?
No, not at all.
Does that not provide immediate service, starting today and continuing through July 1st while we build the system?
They do provide service.
Okay, thank you. My second question is, the $700,000, does the town lose the $300,000 of revenue that we currently receive from the ambulance fund?
The town keeps all revenue.
Town keeps all revenue. Thank you. And my third question, has the town previously contracted with an ALS provider?
That we've paid for? Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, but we have had ALS, private ALS in the past.
We've had private ALS that was a pay-as-you-go service, so it would be for each call, they would get paid for the single call. This is the first and only time I'm aware of that we would have paid a service, a flat fee, essentially a retainer to stay here for us.
Thank you.
Okay, microphone number one. I'm going to leave the questions with the final four folks up here. So no further questions. Microphone number one, please.
Hi, Caitlin Chinkarelli, 18 Dover Farm Road. I know there was reference, I guess, I have a two-part question. One, at the end of the three years, so this RFI that went out, is it, is that price the 850? That's for those three years, and that's, that's all that was discussed? Or does it go up each year? Like, it starts at 850, and then what's next year?
Yes, the RFI had, the first year was 850, the second year was 900, the third year was 950, much similar to what Gus had talked about with the fire service increase, and that's why we sort of thought things were flat between the two. They both have increase in cost.
Okay, and so if we use that same number, what happens next year? I guess, or this year, what if we can't get an ambulance service for that price? What if next year, we need more money? What happens, what happens then? Because the RFI is not binding, right? So we have it for IFI.
And so the RFI would then have to be resubmitted out as an RFP, and we'd hope to get more bids in that. In the process, we did do, we had three bids that came in. One was late and disqualified. We don't really know what that number is. At some point in time, if we do vote this way, we could resubmit for an RFP and see what we get back for responses. But using this as sort of our middle road number, we feel pretty confident that that should be the ceiling, and hopefully is the high ceiling.
Okay, and then my last question. At the end of the three years, we know for sure that the price goes up even more, so are we going to be back here again in three years?
I wouldn't anticipate that. I would anticipate we'd be able to build the department, and within three years, I would like to think we'd have half the department shifts covered with paramedic service.
Can you explain how?
Yes. So by having the private service start, what we would end up doing is we have our two current paramedics and have them continue with the PB waiver process. So next year, we can start with a PB, similar to what the original discussion was with the fire department. With that, we have one shift covered, 25%, 25% less provider needed, which means we have 25% less cost. Second year, hopefully, we have between the one hire that's a replacement, and maybe one of our fine folks will be through paramedic school. They could then be riding the truck, and we'd be covering half our shifts. So this could stage down process, and that's the goal.
But how can we hire the four paramedics if we don't have the funding for it?
We're not looking to hire four paramedics.
So we have the two, and then how do you get the PB waiver without being able to hire more paramedics?
In, within the next two years, there's a retirement, and by contract is replaced as a firefighter/paramedic. So that's three. And in their current contract, there's a very lucrative opportunity to pay for their training and to help them get through the paramedic training. And our hope and goal is that one or two, and maybe even more of them, will take the town up on that. And it's about a two-year program, so two to three years, I'd like to hope we have a couple more paramedics that are trained of our existing staff.
Okay, thank you. Microphone number two.
Hi, Carol Reed, 195 South Street. A clarifying question. On this sheet here, it says that the town used AMR ambulance...
No more questions.
...Events EMS and Brewster in the past few years. The proposal that you have, or the information that you have, that's not one of them that you'd be contracting with?
As of this point, we have not had a bid that's been accepted or submitted timely to be from any of those companies.
And the one that we do have is what service?
Armstrong Ambulance Service. They've been in business for 70-plus years.
Okay. Second question, thank you. And does Armstrong have an estimate for what they would do and charge for mutual aid so that we could reciprocate with the other towns? I know the initial information wasn't included, but...
Yeah, in the RFI proposal that we returned back to us, it was a flat fee to us. So those are things that have to be worked out in the contract and in specifics of the RFP process.
So, so if we chose not to add that, would we not be able to help the other towns?
I, it was actually in there that mutual aid would be an option to use. It was one of the... It was one of the requirements of the RFI. So I don't know the specifics. I do know it was specifically spelled out.
So if we had private, and we weren't opting for that, if we were out on a call with the private people, we would assume, and I'm just asking for clarification, that no one from other towns would come to help us?
No, actually, and you bring up another point. Right now, we have about 450 runs or so a year, and in the last year, they had about 146 ALS calls. So with the private service system, with the two paramedics that are dedicated stationed in Medfield, for Medfield, 146 times, they would have gone with our ambulance and been out of town with our ambulance on a call. But the other 300 times, they would have been in Medfield. And so if we had another call that came in, we'd have two paramedics with their equipment in town to respond to your home. And they would be there, and they would be there then waiting for the mutual aid ambulance that would then come transport whoever it is that was ill.
Final question, and microphone number one.
Diane Moore's Pleasant Court. The $700,000 that you had up on the screen?
Yes.
Is that a solid figure?
That's a solid figure based off of the RFI information we received.
But that's just a request for information, not a request for proposals or requests for bids?
I agree.
So it could be higher? It could be higher? Right?
It could also be lower. There was another company that submitted a bid past the deadline who actually came to our meetings and gave us quotes of around $550,000 total. So when they send out that RFP, we're hopeful that they'll come in. So we use the $700,000 number as a higher ceiling in hopes that that actual number will be around $550,000.
Why didn't you bring a solid number to the people of the town?
Because we're not allowed to do an RFP. I suggested that in the meetings. In one of our first meetings, I asked for that, and I thought that was very important so we could give the taxpayers an actual number. But we're not allowed to do that.
Okay, thank you. So just to kind of set our bearings, we are going to have a vote in a moment on the motion to amend. The motion to amend with the appropriation of $700,000. Before we do that, I'm just going to ask only for final, salient, compelling, if you will, comments that might make a difference. Leave this open just for a minute or two. Any countercomments that you want to make to those? Chief, you can step up in a second. Okay, let's keep these to one minute apiece, please. Microphone number two.
Hello, Mark Farrell, 8 Oxbow Road. I came here going to discuss between option A and option B. I was dismayed to hear an opinion to kick this down the road and do yet another study. That is not acceptable by any means.
That's not the motion. We don't have a motion to kick it down the road and not do another study.
It was an opinion given by the town.
Do you have a comment on the motion to amend?
Okay, so I'll get into that. I think that both these options, if implemented correctly, would provide a better ALS service than we have today, and better than what we had two years ago with the other private service. But the question is in the details of the limitation. As the previous question just asked, there is not a proposal for the $700,000. And if we don't have a solid plan coming out of meeting tonight, if for some reason it comes up more, then we would be in a really bad situation. And that, I think, is unacceptable. We need a solid plan. I've also heard so much about, we don't want to hire firefighters, they have obligations, they have OPEB. I didn't hear any about that last night when we were talking about teachers and other support staff in the schools.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
On the amendment, Dennis Mann, 37 James Ave. Infatransparency, 31 years as a firefighter EMT in the town of Sharon, and the last 13 years as chief. Fiscally, I think that the amendment is cost prohibitive to the members of the community. I think the best way to go is the original proposal, and I would encourage you to turn down the amendment.
Thank you very much. Microphone number two.
Yeah, I'm Ken Manning, 11 Pueblo Road. Scott, I'm asking for clarification. So the amendment is to authorize $700,000, or authorize the Board of Selectmen to spend $700,000 specifically on a contract service? Or is it just $700,000 for EMS? That is, that $700,000 could potentially also be used to hire the ALS personnel by the fire department. I just want clarification on the motion, please.
Yeah, I don't think, I believe it's just the $700,000, right? It's not defined.
Just to authorize $700,000?
Correct, appropriate, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Microphone number one.
Hi, Kristen, 4 Brook Street. I am asking that you approve the 250 asking price of the ALS committee. I've lived this, not once, twice. And I'm sure there's other people in this room that have as well. And when I held my lifeless two-year-old in my arms, I had people barreling through my front door, who were wonderful, and they were kind, and they were nice. But guess what? They couldn't help my two-year-old. He was a limp, wet noodle, okay? You need paramedics in the town to do that. So I'm asking that you move forward with the ALS committee recommendation.
Thank you. Microphone number two.
Tom Cahill, Main Street. Can I preface my comment with a quick question? Is the $700,000 annually based on, that's full-time, that this company will be in town?
Yes, full-time, two people, truck, vehicle, everything they use.
Is there a concern that as we start to implement PBs and pull 25% this year, 50% the next year, what company is going to want to remain in Medfield, knowing that their services are dwindling annually?
I was not able to have that discussion with Armstrong. I did have that discussion with a couple other companies, and most companies feel that would be something that would be acceptable for them, because they see the long-term solution is to go in-house in most places, but realize it needs to be implemented smoothly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Microphone number one. These are our final comments, these three comments.
Laurel Scotty, 10 Green Street. ALS is a necessity, and it's not an addition to services. We've always had it in one way or another. So we have been very lucky, first, not to have to measure outcomes, because we've always had it and must have it. But to have a contract that's actually $850,000, you have no idea whether or not it will be reduced if the services are not required. I've dealt with a lot of contracts. That has to be spelled out, and that is not there. The chief has given us a very clear description of what will be done, as well as the ALS committee, and I strongly hope that we all vote for the committee's recommendation for the $250,000.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
Aaron Kenny, 2 Kingsbury Drive. Also a 20-plus-year fire service professional, current fire chief in Sherburne. There are extra benefits to the original plan proposed by the ALS committee that we can't lose sight of. Our overall public safety is enhanced by adding the additional cross-trained individuals. Our risk to our firefighters and the outcomes that we'll have on the all-hazards mitigating scenes is exponentially impacted in a positive way by having that third set of hands be in the fire department and cross-train, not just an EMS person. The other thing is, is it allows us to answer a second call with an all-hazards mitigating person in-house, as opposed to an EMS person who, if we do happen to have an emergency that is fire-based, or one of the other many hazards that the fire department responds to, they're not going to be trained to handle that, and they're not going to respond. They're just going to sit there, but we're paying for it. If we're going to pay for it, I think we deserve the enhanced service and capability and overall better service to the community with those extra set of hands.
Well, thank you. Microphone number one.
Good evening. My name is Rick Fink. I live at 8 Donnelly Drive. I want to thank you, the ALS committee, for the hard work you put in toward the recommendation and the time that everybody's given to publicly inform us. After attending to public information meetings, I'm left wanting more from our fire department and the ALS committee. In short, I'm speaking to you tonight as an advocate for the taxpayers. The fire department was granted a budget override three years ago for the safety complex. While campaigning for this, we were told there would not be a need for more staffing for about 10 years. Now here we are, looking to hire four more personnel. I suggested at a meeting that we work into a contract that staff train for ALS status. The ALS committee chair, Mr. Murby, noted that taking a draconian approach by cutting everyone and starting over isn't how we do business in Medfield. I can appreciate that answer. However, granting overrides to the fire department on the backs of the taxpayers shouldn't be how we do business in Medfield either. When I pressed for an answer as to why current personnel will not train up, one member of the fire department said, quote, "Because contractually, we don't have to." Interestingly enough, a new contract between the town and the fire department was signed while the last public information meeting was being held. That will expire, I believe, according to Mr. Markucci, today told me, June 30, 2020? Okay. So in that time, we have, I think we can buy some time if we go with this amendment. I recommend we adopt amendment to this recommendation that supports private ALS service. This grant, this will grant to the fire department, the ALS committee, and the taxpayers more time to get it right for Medfield, while immediately implementing ALS service in the interim. So I'm looking for more compromise and accountability from all parties. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Holeshead? Please.
Permission to respond to a couple of the questions?
Quickly, yes.
Is that appropriate?
Yes.
A couple of quick things to misread the question relative to the private ambulance services. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the town of Medfield had numerous relationships with, I think, four or five private sector ALS services. And that didn't work out, okay? There must be a reason for that, okay? The other thing, too, sir, recently relative to the station, I think when the proposition two-and-a-half question about the fire station, the public safety building, was brought up, you did have a private service in place. And that answer, that question was answered quite honestly back then. You had a system in place, and it was working at that time. I wasn't here, but there was no need. There wasn't a misrepresentation, we're going to add people, because you had a system in place. And I think the proponents of the public safety building looked at that system, what was in place at the time, and gave you a fair and honest answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Connor here. Mr. Kaski, last word.
Just really quick to respond to that. I know on the last private company that left, I know Chief Hongs had left out that detail, but they had a contract with other towns as well, and they were supposed to be the first call. And other towns did not obligate that, so therefore they had no choice but to leave the town. So it wasn't the private company that left, it was the other towns that did not honor the contracts.
Okay, very good. So I'm going to read the motion.
Point of information?
Yes.
Smart, Dennis Mann, 37 James Ave. We are just commenting on the gentleman's motion to amend. Is that correct?
This is what we're going to be voting on, yes. On the motion, I'm going to read this motion to amend.
Okay, and then we'll have a comment period on the original warrant article?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so Article 16, motion to amend. Move that the town vote to appropriate $700,000, said some to be raised on the fiscal year 19 tax levy to provide advanced life support services for the town, including, as necessary, hiring of personnel, contracting for services, purchase of supplies, equipment and materials, certification training, provided that the appropriate hereunder shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town to exempt the amounts from the limitations on taxes imposed by Mass General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), in a vote on June 11th. So we're voting on that amendment at the appropriation level of $700,000? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Have a show of hands, please. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Okay, I'm going to deem that the amendment does not pass. Okay, so we're back to the original motion. Thank you. Comment on the original motion.
Yes, Dennis Mann, 37 James Ave. Going over the figures for our current fire department ambulance budget, and taking the number of taxpayers that I believe the board said last night was about 8,000, that comes to approximately 37 cents a day that the average taxpayer, of the 8,000 taxpayers, are paying for fire and EMS service in the community. As a former fire chief, I believe the town of Sharon, I mean, town of Medfield, excuse me, is underserved with firefighters, as well as paramedics. We have the opportunity to increase by 50% our fire department staffing levels at this time for an additional 7 cents a day. So you add those two together, or 8 cents, I'm sorry, that's 45 cents a day. That's not even a package of gum. Remember, you have two firefighters on staff. If they go out on an EMS call, they can't provide ALS-level service. The opportunity for our firefighters to get to the paramedic level, as the previous gentleman stated, was 1,800 hours of training, that's a time and a half. That's what your firefighters will be getting, because obviously, they're working beyond their normal tour duty. If they're not on their tour duty, and somebody else will be working that at time and a half. So it's fiscally irresponsible to do that. I think through attrition, we'll be able to hire paramedics, as well as the four that we're talking here, and in a few years, add additional firefighters. Right now, Medfield has one firefighter for 1,500 residents. Where I came from, it was one for 670 residents, and to me, that wasn't acceptable. When I was chief, we had, when I first started, 13 years, we had no paramedics, nor would hospital was unavailable many times when we needed their services. So I started embarking on hiring paramedics. I had a plan, one per year for the first four years. The Board of Selectmen was kind enough to give me, in the town meeting, four paramedics all at once, and then we were up and running. And then through attrition, through retirements, we increased that. When I left 10 years later...
Could you just please finish up your comments?
When I left, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'll finish up. When I left 10 years later, they had 21 paramedics. The town of Medfield can do the same thing, and it goes by very quickly, and you'll get a full service and additional firefighters.
Can I just ask about the math? Just about the math. 47 cents a day, isn't that $180 a year?
That's correct.
And so what does that represent?
That represents the 8,000 taxpayers I heard last night. We have 8,000 taxpayers? Did I hear that comment?
We have 9,007 registered voters.
Oh, okay.
I don't know how many households we have to pay taxes.
I thought someone said 8,000 last.
4,400 households pay.
4,400. Well, I use 4,000 households, makes it a little more.
Okay, per household, that answers.
Per household. But it comes to a little more than that, all right?
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to limit these comments in the interest of the other six articles that we need to get through tonight. So if we could, just 30 seconds, if you feel you need to add anything to this debate, please do.
Lee Tredway, 14 Kenny Road. Perhaps I misunderstand, but I think the article, as it reads up there, should really be a vote on appropriating $400,000 to sync up with the staffing requirements that the chief outlined probably an hour ago. But this 250 may be the net effect, if in fact, there's an income of $150,000. But the fact is, what we're really doing is being asked to appropriate $400,000, not $250,000.
Mr. Murby?
We had, I had about a two-and-a-half-hour debate with the financial leaders of our town administration over this very issue. Let me tell you how I thought about it. We wanted you to know it was a $400,000 increase, and $320,000 of that ultimately would wind up on the fire department budget. The reason that I pushed for the $250,000 override is the override is the increase in the tax levy that you all are going to pay taxes on. So if we put in a $400,000 override, and then the activity we're taking generates $150,000, what we've done is we've asked you to raise the tax levy limit, $150,000...
limit $150,000 more than you really should have. I've been on the warrant committee long enough that there was an ulterior motive for me too, which is if the fire department says they can do it for this, I want to make sure they do do it for that. So, the intention behind that was to basically not have the override be any bigger than it needed to be, given what the town would need.
Mr. Tredway?
I, I hear what you're saying, Gus. That just does not make sense to me. We're, we see a chart for staffing that calls for $400,000, but we're being, we're voting on 250,000. I, I hear what you're saying, but to me, when all, when the dust settles, somebody's gonna want to go out and hire, I think it was eight people for this $400,000. And as a taxpayer, I'm saying, wait a minute, no, we voted on 250,000, not 400,000, and let the override business take care of itself in the June 11 election.
So, let me keep going. The 200, you can applaud for him, he's a good guy. The $250,000 override for this year, because we know we're in a transition, the modeling that we did as far as the actual cost that the fire department needed is we assumed that we would staff up, we didn't have any better idea in terms of exactly what would happen, but we assumed we'd be able to find four paramedics for an average of a half-year each. So, basically, what we were asking for was the funding to be able to pay for two full-time equivalent paramedics in FY19. That $250,000 override is actually more than what the, what the fire department itself needs. It needs 160,000 of that 320,000 to pay for two paramedics, half of those four. So, during this year, this, this gets to your issue, I think, laying around the, the allocation or the appropriation of the budget. The appropriation of the budget for this year is not the full 400,000. The appropriation of the budget this year is to cover four paramedics half-time, basically half of what the ultimate endpoint will be. Next year, if, if we are up and running with a PB waiver and we have four paramedics and we are operating that way, then the town is now starting to generate revenues. There's no, if the town or the, or the ALS is generating revenues, then the town doesn't need to have another override because that added revenue suddenly raises the total cost against which the Prop. two-and-a-half limit will be raised. So, there is no automatic assumption to be made that the other 150,000 of that 400,000 will need to be raised on an override. In fact, we believe that the revenues that come in will make that unnecessary. There will be, there will have to be a higher budget allocation in the out-years, but if, if the revenues coming in work the way this is projected to work, and we have a high degree of confidence that that, that the numbers we're using are good, it won't be an override that would be needed to fund that addition to the budget.
Okay, I'm gonna call the question after 15 seconds from the six people on the mic. Go ahead.
Hey, Jack Hunt, 71 Pleasant Street. Before I retired, I was lieutenant in the Needham Police Department. I also worked as a EMT on the ambulance. You have adequate coverage in this town. I, I propose do not hire anyone. You should promote from within, train from within. It'll save you $400,000 a year, and it goes up every year. I'm on a pension. Thank you, Needham.
Okay, thank you.
Hi.
Quickly.
Yep, Kealan Jincarelli. I don't have a study, but I do have a quick personal experience. My daughter, in the middle of the night, had her fourth febrile seizure. We had always just managed the previous ones at home, except this time she stopped breathing. And I frantically called 911 and was pretty appalled. As kind as everybody was, I was appalled to know that somebody walking in my door was not a paramedic. So, I just want everybody to think long and hard on that. If you actually need the service, and it's not just children, it's cardiac arrest, it could be an accident on a soccer field, it's anaphylactic shock, are you willing to not have a paramedic come into town? And I think one quick thing that the, that people may not realize, that if we move to dismiss this, we are losing our support that we have from Westwood in Walpole as of July 1st, and that is...
Okay, thank you. Microphone number two.
Tom Brennan, six Nausetree.
No more comments. No more. No, we're done. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Full disclosure, I'm not a native of Massachusetts. I'm from New York. They had a volunteer system down there. I'm formerly a volunteer fireman. Personally, I've done CPR 10 times without a paramedic. I managed to save one person, and that was only because we were right there when he had the heart attack, and he stopped breathing, and the heart stopped, the whole nine yards. We were very lucky. You do not get that lucky. Okay? You need a medic, push drugs, defibrillate, that whole bit. It's just something we need. We need paramedics.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
Ian Moore's. A year and a half ago, I had to call 911 myself when my husband collapsed right in front of me and was shaking from head to toe and holding onto his chest. I have to thank the firefighters and the police department that came. They were wonderful. As I followed the ambulance down 109, I was appalled and confused as to why we had to pull over. And that's when I saw the ALS people get into the ambulance. I'm lucky my husband's alive. We need to have our own in-house service.
Thank you. Mr. Kaski.
Stephen Kaski, just really quick, something that was overlooked. I know in our committee, we also asked for the equipment costs. None of this was given to us. We have no idea how much this is going to cost. We were told that we could possibly get grants. We need two machines on an ambulance. It could be 38 to 40,000 dollars a machine. That's 80,000 dollars. Then we're going to equip a second ambulance to run two trucks for ALS in the near future or soon. That's another 80,000 dollars. And then we don't even know what else is, what else we need for equipment. And again, we've asked for this numerous times, and we never received it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Microphone number one.
Again, two Kingsbury Drive, Fire Chief Sherburne, Massachusetts resident here. I did just get, to answer that question you just heard, it cost me $45,000 to get the necessary equipment for the Sherburne Fire Department to be ALS, even though we're not able to go there right now because of fiscal limitations. But we did get the equipment because I'm planning on going that direction as soon as possible. Just, just because he said that, I just wanted to answer that. The next thing is, we are, as a town, very, very fortunate. We have one of the lowest rates per capita that we pay for fire and EMS. I was researching this for my town meeting for Sherburne to justify the costs of apparatus replacement, things of that nature. We respond with far less than the national average, but we still get the same comfortable level of service as the towns around us in terms of our public classification rating, which I believe is a four or five, all right? But we're paying significantly less. That's something you think about when you're looking at this. You know, I know there's been, people said the budget's increased by 5% and this and that. You're still paying less than every community around you for the same level of protection and still will be, even if it goes up or you pay the 47 cents a day. And that's something to think about. It's the national standard that five people respond to an emergency medical call. We respond with two. You look at every community around us. Westwood's sending four or five. Walpole's sending four or five. All of them, the same thing. We send two. And we do a good job with that, but having the extra set of hands, we're, we're a little bit behind the, the ball here realistically. So, it's something to think about. The enhanced service for both fire and EMS is well worth the investment.
Thank you, chief. Final comment.
Meredith Chamberlain, 10 Pleasant Street. I have a story like everyone else, but I'll skip that because everyone's tired of this topic. But I just want this visual. You have Dale Street, you have the police station, the fire station there, you have Park and Rex, and you have Memorial. And I don't know how many hundreds of allergies you have in those three buildings. But you're telling me one of those kids was in an anaphylactic shock, and instead of someone right there being there in two seconds, we're gonna have to wait for another town? I'm not gonna put a $250,000 price tag on any single one of these people in this room, and I suggest no one else do that either.
Thank you. Okay, we're ready for the vote. I'm not gonna read the motion again. The motion is just exactly the same as the one I read, except the appropriation now is for $250,000. It continues to be subject to and contingent upon the affirmative vote on Proposition two and a half that would take place on June 11. Everybody comfortable with what we're doing? Okay, we're voting on the original motion that was offered by the warrant committee. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.